Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this medium independent school district 544 to order due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota directive limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting of the Fergus Falls School District, School Board meeting is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13B point oh two one. And with that, the clerically establish a form for us.
Here's Ling, Kirby Anderson, Natalie Knudsen, Melanie Cole, Matthew Lemke, Missy Hermes, present, and Steven Biggessa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda passes. There are no acknowledgements for today, resolution acknowledgements, so we're going to move right into our reports. Our first report is from our elementary principal for Adams and McKinley, Scott Colbeck.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you bright and early this morning. Hope you had a good weekend. Boy, just thinking about what I could report to you this morning, I could have taken this in so many different directions. Don't want to get too deep into the weeds and I want to keep it a bit on the surface, but, you know, it's getting to be crunch time and a lot of meetings this summer, a lot of discussions, a lot of talk, and finally you get to a point where you just have to make some decisions and go with it and see how things are coming to turn out. So I think we're going to learn a lot in the first few days and a few weeks of school. And we're excited about the school year. It's always good to see our secretaries come back at the elementary schools. They started back last Monday. They always come back and have two full weeks in the building before our staff come back. Staff will report back next week, of course, for workshop week. However, we will see our teachers tomorrow. We have a training for our new adopted reading language arts curriculum. So we're excited about having some initial training in the new curriculum tomorrow and seeing all of our teaching staff. Wanted to mention to you that our back-to-school letters, those back-to-school letters that families so eagerly anticipate are going to be mailed out on Thursday of this week should arrive into families then Friday or Saturday. Of course, in that letter, among many pieces of information, families will find out who their child's teacher is. And then they will also find out some information about open house if your student grades K through four and also find out about information for the day of orientation if you're a student in kindergarten. Let me talk about open house a little bit. That was one of those things where we just kind of went really back and forth. Do we have an open house? Do we not? If we have it, what does it look like? And of course, anytime you ask for thoughts, ideas, opinions on anything these days, it's just across the board. People want to do it like we always have some, and then others say, well, we maybe shouldn't. And so we found a compromise, and I wanted to explain to you what our open house is going to look like on Wednesday, September 2nd. That's the night we always have it. In the past, it's been from 5:00 to 7:00. This year, it's going to be from 5:00 to 8:00. And what we're doing is we're splitting the alphabet in half, and so we're going to invite our A through K group. If your last name starts with the letter A through K, we're inviting you to come to your child's school from 5:00 to 6:30. And if your last name starts L through Z, then you're invited to the school between 6:30 and 8:00. Now, besides that change, we're also going to limit the visit to 15 minutes. So we're going to be communicating that through the back-to-school letter, but also in a flyer that families will be handed when they arrive at the school building. We're also going to ask that just one parent accompany a child into the school building and into the classroom and that they just bring their school-aged child for that building. And then we're going to limit no more than four children with a parent. So eight people total in the classroom with the classroom teacher. And we think if we put all of those things in place, we should be able to manage the traffic. We don't anticipate that we would have too many people standing out in the hallway waiting to get into the classroom to see their child. You know, when we asked for feedback on that, there was a lot of a lot of different thoughts on how we wanted to do open house for the kindergartners. Should we have an open house because we already have a day of orientation planned for them on September 8th? So some people thought that might be sufficient just to have orientation on the 8th. But we decided that, you know what, let's have an open house so that those kindergartners and their families, their parents can get into the building two times before their first day of school. And if you think about, in a normal situation, in a normal year, our kindergartners and their families get into our building four times. It starts with kindergarten orientation in March, which was canceled. And then we have right start in early June, and that was canceled. And then we have open house, and then we have orientation. Just a reminder, although the first day of school for most everybody is September 8th, really for kindergarten, the first day of school is September 9th because on September 8th, we bring in the families individually for 15-minute meetings with their child's teacher. So wanted to take a little time this morning to explain open house and what that's going to look like at McKinley, Adams, and Cleveland. Also wanted to just mention our, our school buildings have never looked so good. When you don't have, I suppose, traffic and students in the building for close to six months, it gives our custodians some extra time to do some things. And so it's really like parts of our buildings have had a makeover. And that 1939 interior green brick, green block that they built Adams with and McKinley, some of that has been turned to a tan color or a canoe color. Boy, does that freshen it up and make a big difference. If you're ever over at Adams and want to stop into the cafeteria, if you walk in there and think that something looks a little bit different, it's, we just changed that up entirely. Also, the two main entrances at McKinley and Adams look entirely different. So we're very pleased with how our building look, and a big thank you goes out to our building custodians. As you can tell by the agenda that you have in front of you, there's been a lot of activity going on in the world of recruiting and hiring staff. Interestingly, one of our Adams staff members ended up over here at Kennedy. One of the Kennedy staff members ended up over at McKinley. And somebody that we thought was going to end up at McKinley ended up over at Adams. So it's a little bit of a fruit basket upset, but we're continuing to make good progress in that area. Starting last week, a week ago today, I would have told you I had seven positions to fill. Today, I can tell you that three of them are filled and I have four left. However, the majority of those are, the majority of those are support staff positions. But I was able to find a long-term sub for a music position. And then I wanted to thank the board, although you can't tell my, my expression on my face right now is very pleasant and very pleased, and I'm smiling at all of you. I know a little bit later this morning, you're going to approve another section of kindergarten. And we have an excellent addition to our kindergarten staff at McKinley School, so thank you for that. And then lastly, just wanted to mention that in, in second grade, we have eight sections total this year. And two of those in-person classes are Cleveland. Five of the in-person classes are Adams. That's seven. And then we have one teacher assigned to handle all of the distance learners. And as of today, and this changes by the day, but as of right now, we have 21 students in second grade who have selected the 100% distance learning option. I'll look at first grade. We have nine sections total. Three of those will be at McKinley. Those are all in-person. We have five in-person first-grade classrooms at Adams. And then we have one distance learning section. We have 16 first graders right now in our distance learning section. I should mention that our distance learning teacher in second grade is Joe Allen Johnson. Our distance learning teacher in first grade is Megan Lee. And then I'll look at kindergarten. I guess after today, after the board meeting and after you approved the ninth section, we would have nine sections. One of those then is dedicated to distance learning. We have 16 students in that distance learning section. Jessica Colehase is the teacher there. So then we'll have eight in-person sections, and they will all be at McKinley, of course. And then with the addition of this ninth section, we have some room to grow. And again, I just wanted to thank you for that and appreciate that very much. I think that's covered everything on my notes. Again, I suppose I could, oh, you know what, one last thing, not on my notes, but I just wanted to share with you. This is really going to be interesting, and we're not sure yet exactly what this is going to look like because we have some things to figure out. But, you know, when we dismiss school at McKinley and Adams, it's a very controlled dismissal. And when kids who don't ride the bus generally stay in the building. And at Adams, they all go into the cafeteria. And at McKinley, a lot of them go into the gym, and a lot of them go into the main entry up by the main office, depending on where their classroom is in the building. And then we supervise them, and we ask the parents to come into the building to pick up those children. And so if we're trying to reduce traffic into our buildings, we just have some things to figure out there. And I'm anticipating that we'll have more kids that are being picked up this year than in past years. Again, I'm making an assumption that fewer families will decide to put their child on a bus. So we don't know yet what that's going to look like. Might it be where a classroom teacher walks his or her kids, all of their kids outside, and put the bus kids on the bus and then walk the kids that are going to be picked up to a certain part of the school grounds and have the parents come and get them there. That, that works great until it starts to rain or gets to be 20 below. Who knows what we'll be doing when it's 20 below, what our school will look like. Or do we change some traffic patterns and try to have one entrance where the families enter, pick up their child, and instead of turning around and exiting through the same door that they entered, do we have them exit through a different door? So those are just some of the challenges and some of the things that we're starting to, well, not starting to think through, been thinking through that for months. And again, it's decision time, and you wrestle with everything. It seems like whatever decision you make, you might solve one problem and create some other challenges that you have, that you maybe aren't aware of even yet. So, so I think we're, it's going to be a little bit of an experiment. I think grace is a word that's going around right now. And patience, and we're just going to do the very, very best we can. And we'll see how it goes. So thank you for your time, and I'll open up to any questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Colbeck. Our next report will come from our other elementary principal, Lee Wen. How's it going?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I feel like I haven't talked a whole lot yet this morning, so my voice is still kind of waking up. But it's good to see you. As I thought about what to share with you too, there was just a whole host of information, and we could talk at length. And I just paused and thought back to what was going on this summer and kind of started thinking a little. Thank you, Les. So I just have some acknowledgements that I think is, would be a good way to reflect on the summer happenings. And first of all, I really wanted to just thank the public library for all that they did to support students and keep them engaged with reading and literacy this summer. They promoted, they carried out the summer reading program in June and July. And that's just providing incentives for students, helping them with books, keeping them motivated to dig into those books and enjoy reading throughout the summer. They hosted a virtual book bunch. They had hosted Storytimes, and those Storytimes are posted to a YouTube channel so you can still pull them up and listen to the stories and enjoy books that the kids enjoyed throughout the summer. And then also those personal librarian services. They did a great job of finding new ways to facilitate keeping kids engaged with, with reading. So kudos to the, our public librarians for all that they did this summer. Otter Adventures, that posed a challenge too. In a typical summer, Otter Adventures has staggered out through the summer where the students receive targeted services in June, July, and August. Otter Adventures was put on hold during that month of June. Kristin Tool did a great job of outlining programming and making adjustments to meet requirements. And students had four full weeks of Otter Adventures here at the end of July and beginning of August. So Otter Adventures concluded last week. But Kristin, the teachers, and the support staff did an outstanding job of providing those services for the kids. And it looked like they had a bundle of fun. They were on school grounds. They were out in the community on Tuesdays and Thursdays and had exceptional experiences. Also, Mr. Colbeck mentioned our buildings look as good as ever. And the custodians appreciated having less traffic in the buildings, the elementary buildings this summer where they could really dig in and tackle some projects that have been waiting to be tackled. So I really wanted to recognize the work of our custodial department. Even just driving around town and seeing the school grounds, our grounds crew does an outstanding job, and they're keeping our lawns and green spaces looking nice and trimming around the buildings. So a big thank you to that, that group for the, the great job that they do. And then we can't overlook our tech department. We have an outstanding tech department, and they were key in leading the deployment and last spring, and then also the current collection of all those devices at the end of the school year and, and throughout the summer. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes work in getting equipment and technology prepared for the return of all of us. And they, they're tasked with some big jobs, and we oftentimes ask them to do things very quickly. And they rise to the challenge each and every time. So we really appreciate all that they do. Certainly appreciate the involvement that they have with staff training, webinars. They're very resourceful and just really, really do a great job of supporting all that we are doing. And then lastly, as you know, we, there was a parent survey that was sent out so that we would learn the parent's choice for the instructional delivery for their child, whether it be in-person or distance learning. And we heard from many, many families, but there were many families that we didn't hear from. And in order for us to have a thorough and accurate count as to what families' preferences were so that we could move forward with planning, we needed staff members to make a bundle of phone calls. And so a big thank you to the staff who adjusted their typical work plan and paused and took time to make endless calls so that we could hear from each and every one of those families. And that was very, very helpful so that we, we could move forward with confidence in making sure that students were in the sections that their families were preferring them to be in. So lots of things to be thankful for there. And regarding the, the parent survey results, that really was key, providing us the information as to what they were, what families were preferring. And our student enrollment at Cleveland, as Mr. Colbeck mentioned, we will continue to have two sections of second grade at Cleveland. And in third grade this year, last, third grade this year, we'll have eight sections total of third grade. Seven of those sections will be in-house, and one section is dedicated to the distance learning section. And in third grade, we have 27 students who are enrolled in our distance learning option. This year, last year's third grade had seven sections. Now with eight sections, we have Mr. Swenson, who has been teaching fourth grade, will be teaching third grade this year. He'll remain in his current classroom, but he'll be a third grade teacher and teaming with those colleagues. And in fourth grade, we have seven sections total. Six of those sections will be in-house, with four of them being paired with the Prairie Science classes, and then one section of distance learning. And there are currently 21 students enrolled in that distance learning class. So overall class size is, third grade has 175 students enrolled currently, and fourth grade has 149. So the current fourth grade class has been that smaller class that has come through the grades, and we've adjusted as they've progressed. Mr. Colbeck mentioned the Wonders Training tomorrow. As we look, look ahead this week, we have a couple of big trainings. Tomorrow, the Wonders curriculum training will take place. It's being delivered via webinar. So the trainers will not be present, but we'll have the trainers up on screens in the media center here at Kennedy Secondary School and then also projected in our, in the lunchroom at Kennedy. And the kindergarten and first grade teachers will be together for their training and focus on that early literacy. The second through sixth grade teachers will be together for their training. And the Wonders curriculum has a lot of resources. They have great tools for assessments, and they also have a component that they will share with us about features that will really support distance learning should we, for those students who are distance learning currently or if we need to make some adjustments as we go through the year. So it's timely training. Teachers are grateful that they can be receiving that this week as opposed to that, the next week when we have our district in-service. That gets to be a full week in and of itself. So this gives them time to listen, learn together, soak it in, and then, then prepare for that in-service week. So they're excited to, to be receiving this tomorrow. On Wednesday of this week, our special ed teachers, Title I teachers in Paris, will be here at Kennedy for the Level Literacy Instruction Training. They, we call it LLI, and this is a curriculum that is being implemented this year as an intervention curriculum. It's designed to, you know, help those students who are not fully achieving at their current grade level and helping them with that deficit so that they can be, become proficient readers. And it's, what we've read and studied and observed is it's a strong curriculum that will, will do this very thing. For us here at Fergus Falls, it's providing that continuity of instruction from kindergarten through the elementary, through sixth grade, through the elementary grade, to really strengthen those, those reading skills in kids. So we're, we're really excited about this. It looks engaging. There, there are book, really truly literature books that you open and read. There's a component that the students take home and practice at home, so lots of positive extension with this program too. And then Mr. Colbeck did a, provided a very thorough explanation of open house, so I'm not going to reiterate all of that. But I do have confidence that that plan will lessen the traffic. Not everybody will be showing up at once, so having some staggered start times for the open house, given the beginning and ending of the alphabet, I think will really, really help. And we're glad that those elementary students can come into their building, find their classroom, meet their teacher, see their locker, see their names on their lockers and desks. So that really makes a big difference for younger students and making them feel welcome that this is their classroom and school. So we're glad about that. And with that, I will conclude my report for today.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Our next report will be from our secondary principal, Lee Wen.
Take a morning, everybody. Many of the things on my list here were also touched on by Mr. Colbeck and Mrs. Run, so we'll hopefully go through this pretty fast. We've also been involved here in relationship to some hires recently. I think you've got a number of those on your agenda here for this morning. You know, of course, the challenge is making sure that we have a teacher in front of all of our face-to-face students, which for all kinds of various reasons, at the last minute, you know, we always hear changes in the relationship to staffing. So we're trying to do the best to cover all of those and keep our fingers crossed this week that we hear very little from our staff by way of those lines so we can just keep planning forward here. You see a number of hires on your agenda today in relationship to IQ Academy. Those numbers continue to keep climbing. Special thanks to Ryan Johnson for all his work in relationship to the staffing patterns that he's put together and also the hires that he's made over the course of this summer have been pretty extensive. So we really appreciate his work. And we appreciate the work of other staff members that come in to serve on these interview teams, basically volunteering their time to come in and help us. But they do have an interest in making sure that they get great colleagues to work with. So they're usually very willing to come in, and we, we appreciate all of that. They mentioned a little bit about back-to-school. Again, an extremely difficult decision. But here at the secondary school, we made the decision not to bring large groups in to the building. That has its pluses and minuses. I did, with the help of Mr. Roy Anderson, put out a new student video on our website. So I've had a few comments come back my way about our excellent videotaping skills or, they usually weren't that nice to me, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And I would say that we are putting together a second video that's basically going to go out just to our incoming fifth graders. So we'll walk them a little bit more around the building, give them a few more helpful hints as they enter on September 8th here for the first time. And we'll also have administrators, some of our senior high students, and other people available at the two main entrances to greet those students as they arrive and make sure that they get escorted to their first classroom. And then from there, of course, our teaching staff spends about the first two weeks orientating those new students anyway. And so I think they're going to get all their questions answered. And they will also get, basically walk to every single one of their classes if they do have a transition within the building. So I can think we can take care of them, but just because of the safety involved, we're such a large school, we just didn't feel it was a good decision to try to bring large groups into the building here to start the, start the new year. We will be looking to mail out homeroom assignments, teacher assignments for fifth and sixth grade. And we're going to do that during the week of August 31st. We, we know that the elementary might be out there a little bit ahead of us, but there's so many changes that come in at the last minute. We'd like to use all of this week to make sure we've got those schedules all figured out. And then we'll get those mailed out as far as fifth and sixth grade placements. And also seventh through 12th grade schedules will also be mailed out that same week of August 31st. So sometime over the course of that week, well before school starts, at least our fifth and sixth graders will know who their teachers are, and our seventh and through 12th graders will know what their class schedule looks like. And then maybe also further expanding on what we're trying to do by way of our 100% distance learning students for five through 12. In fifth and sixth grade, we've really identified a team of teachers to be able to work with those students. So we have two teachers in fifth grade that are going to work with basically and share two different sections. One of those sections is going to be distance learning kids. The other section is going to be face-to-face kids. So one teacher in Mrs. Amelia Lamar might be taking the mornings with our distance kids. And in the afternoon, Mrs. Emily Aver will be taking those students and just flipping those two groups. And we're doing the same thing in sixth grade. So we have Mr. Ike Carlson and Mrs. Christina LaVoy, and they are also going to be sharing those groups. Right now, our sixth grade group is the smallest group that we have by way of distance learning. Some are in those upper teens. And the rest of our groups really across all the grade, our largest group is in eighth grade with about 33 students. And then it's kind of spread out in the high teens, low twenties across all the different grade levels. In seventh and eighth grade, we're looking to designate certain teachers and certain to teach directly to them sometime over the course of their teaching day. So we've identified math, English, social studies, science teacher to teach one section basically then of distance learning sometime over the course of that day. You're aware that in our seventh through 12th grade program, we're basically looking to have students in the building here four days a week. And that Wednesday during the middle of the week, And that Wednesday during the middle of the week, except not for the first week, but most Wednesdays will be dedicated toward working with distance students. And then in high school, we really couldn't do that because we have so many single-section offerings. So there, we really need to have our high school teachers take care of the students that are face-to-face in front of them, the hybrid students that might be there, not there that particular day, and the distance learning kids that may be assigned particularly to their section. We made some accommodations in like English, TAN, just a few courses where we've kind of grouped those students together and having one teacher take responsibility of that. But otherwise, it's really going to be a challenging assignment for our high school teachers to be able to handle those three models all at the same time. But there's really no other good way to do it unless you wanted to drop a whole lot of opportunities for those kids that are choosing distance learning over the course of this year. So we appreciate the number of staff members that have been in the building already during this month of August. They have been coming in, getting ready. They know that the challenge in front of them is really going to be talking. And so they want to be prepared. And what we've kind of said is that if you're not recording, you're going to be behind. The best way for our seventh through 12th grade teachers is to get something recorded and have it ready to go so that they can keep up with the demands delivering that curriculum in so many different environments. Couple other things here. Again, a special thank you to some of our clerical staff that made phone calls home to try to get information from families about if you're choosing face-to-face or if you're choosing the distance learning. For our viewers out there, we'd like to hear back from you if you didn't get a chance to respond. So please call us with any changes whatsoever. Call us if you're not even sure what you told us. We'll take all that information and double-check to make sure, because we'd really like to have as many schedules set come that first September 8th, first day of school. And if there are some distance learning option that people are taking, we really want to hear about that ahead of time. Let's see, what else did I have on here? Special thanks to Cooper's Office Supply. Every time we call those folks up, whether we need a teacher desk chair or, you know, more plexiglass barriers across the school we're trying to put up, they respond immediately, and it really helped us out a lot. So we really appreciate their efforts. And of course, the building looks great. Our custodians have just done a fantastic job. So with that, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Our last report is from our Superintendent. Good morning.
Morning.
A few updates, building-wise and grounds. Work is continuing, ongoing over at Lincoln. The studs for the walls are going in. There'll be major work going on at the parking lot, refurbishing that. Some of the excess, as they grind up the old lot, we're going to keep about 20 to 25 cubic yards of that so that we have a supply of materials to do our own patching at various sites on our, at our other schools. So that should work out well for us moving forward. Still projected to be finished at the very tail end of December. We continue to have some struggles getting the tennis court finished up. The prime contractor hired a subcontractor. That, that business withdrew from the job. And so we are in the process of working with the prime to come up with a resolution for that situation. In the meantime, our thanks to the city of Fergus Falls for allowing us to use their tennis courts as an alternative. The parking lot at KSS has now been completed, so appreciate that work. Mike Donahoe has been busy working on the thermal scanner project to help us check temperatures as students walk into the building. That's not intended to be a substitute for the screening that parents would do before school, before they send their kids on. And what is going to be kind of a nice long-term mix there. Mike was able to find a solution that combines a security camera with a thermal imaging camera. And so hopefully, there will come a day when COVID-19 is behind us. But what will be left behind is additional security cameras that will still be very functional and useful for the district versus purchasing just a unit that would detect temperature only. So thought that was a very good solution, ongoing, that will meet the needs of the district. The chiller project continues to be vexing. We had that solution analysis done. It came back, there were some adjustments to be made. Bert was able to make the adjustments to, adjustments to the solution, but the chiller is still not, still not functioning. So we are working on the next phase of seeking a solution for that project and hope to know, basically by the end of September, whether the current chiller can be a viable solution for us or not. We get our weekly COVID-19 case rates by 10,000 people in Otter Tail County. We stayed consistent at 6.38. Just a reminder to the audience that a case rate of 10 or above would force us into Tier Two. But currently, we are still holding steady in that lower six range. As mentioned earlier, many thanks to the staff that made the calls to families, dividing them up based on preference, whether they were 100% distance learning or whether they were going to come in for face-to-face instruction. Students who are divided up by alphabet and family group A through K, they will be referred to as the maroon group. L through Z will be the gold group. And those choosing 100% distance learning will be the otters. The plan at this point on the high school side is a slight deviation from the overall plan. We will bring in both the maroon and gold groups two days that first week. So we will not have the off day for distance learning planning. We did receive news of some additional funding coming from the state that's estimated to be about $700,000. This will certainly be very much welcomed. We do know, under the circumstances, that we've had more families than is typical selecting homeschool. And so we know our enrollment will be down a little bit from what it typically would be, and this will help offset some of those. There's also some lobbying going on at the state level in an attempt that holds districts harmless this year in terms of their enrollment under the circumstances. So we will see how those pan out. I want to give a special thanks to the 544 Foundation. They sponsored the Chromebook sleeves that we ordered. And those really go a long way to protecting those units. Later this morning, I'll be via Zoom attending a Safe Learning Plan regional meeting. So looking forward to that. Technology training was held for teachers last Thursday. Special thanks to our technology department. And also, we had several faculty members with expertise in various applications that stepped forward to provide training to their colleagues. So very appreciative of that. We have additional training for staff on distance learning instruction that will take place free of charge through Lake's Country Service Quop. So appreciate them putting that together. And then also, this is a pay-for service, but 60 hours of training that can be enrolled in through the Minnesota Rural Education Association, again, to support distance instruction. Many, many thank yous to give, and I'm sure that I will miss some people, so my forgiveness ahead of time. Building and grounds look fantastic. And really appreciate all the work our custodians and building and grounds staff have done to get the buildings shiny and ready for students to come through our doors once again. To Lance and his staff for preparations to start the year off in our normal delivery model, which will need to be changed. He put a lot of thought and effort, as did his staff, with the new layout for food service last year. And that's going to be on hold because you won't have students able to basically self-serve through the lunch this year. So it'll be more of a grab-and-go type thing. But we also need to plan a continuation of providing meals for families that would be either on their hybrid off day or 100% distance learning so that they can get nutrition as well. All of this stuff, normally, a school year opening is really busy. But with all of the nuances with COVID-19, it just added a lot of extra thought and preparation from everybody in the organization to get the school year underway. I want to thank Otter Tail Coaches. They're busy putting various schedules together, whether we're on a maroon day or a gold day, or whether we're on a Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, or Tier Four schedule. All of those bus routes have to be built, and they're building them ahead of time. So that allows for a very smooth transition transportation-wise as we have to roll from one tier to another based on our county case rates. Thank you to the preschool staff for their work in modifying their delivery to accommodate the COVID-19 restrictions. To Mary and the community ed staff for taking extra precautions to make sure that we continue to offer a robust community ed program, but we keep the safety of our, of our constituents and community first and foremost. Huge thank you goes out to the district admin team. We've had many meetings over the course of the last three months with a lot of discussion. We're at the point now where a lot of the nuts and bolts are going to the building leadership teams, determining instructional models and exactly how those pieces will unfold during the course of the year. But appreciate all the thought and effort that's gone into putting our district learning plan together. The district office staff. We've had a huge amount of turnover in staff and between filling positions, accommodating people based on medical or health needs, along with the three building principals, making accommodations and reworking schedules to make sure that our employees can continue to serve in meaningful ways to educate our students, but also keeping their health and safety in mind. To the purchase and procurement of personal protective equipment, there's just been a lot that's been ongoing and figuring out how to disperse that equipment, all of those details. The district office has, has really stepped up to the plate, including on the finance side, working with the various CARES dollars, all the additional funding and properly coding the expenditures that are related to COVID-19. I can say I'm very excited about the new school year. I'm happy that we will have students in our hallways again and in our classrooms. I'm excited about a, a distance learning model that I think is going to be robust and keep students engaged. And excited about the year ahead, just watching the opportunities that students have to grow and develop as people and the partnership that we have with our community. And appreciate the board's ongoing support and ideas as this plan has unfolded and look forward to a very exciting year ahead. So with that, certainly able to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our general consent items. We have events for the August 10th, 2020 board meeting to approve. Personnel, Elaine Nicky.
Yes, we have, good morning, everyone. We have a number of personnel changes as we do before we start school each year. This year seems to be a little bit heavier. Support staff resignations. We have Ashley Sortland, Leanne Atkinson, Taylor Thompson, Ashley Olson, and Maggie Ferguson. These are all special ed paras that have resigned. Just note that Taylor Thompson is resigning from 544, but she will be hired on on the 935 staff. So it's kind of a reassignment for Taylor. Support staff hires, Shaila Brown, Ursula Nansen, Isabella Peterson, Taylor Samuelson, Mallory Heartlepp, excuse me. These are all special ed paras for hire. Heidi Brown, she also is a special ed paraprofessional, but as a long-term substitute for the school year. Krista Hexum, she'll be returning as a long-term paraeducator substitute for four and a half hours over at Cleveland. Haley Sockness, Student Services Coordinator. And then Meg Garahan, Paraeducator reassignment to McKinley Library for this school year. Under certified staff hires and contract revisions, I have Amy Glade as a kindergarten teacher. She'll be a long-term sub for the first six weeks of school here. Peyton Wisconsin, Language Arts Teacher. Allison Ringquist, Elementary Teacher. Ashton, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, Hughes, possibly, Elementary Teacher. Heather Miller, Elementary Teacher. Heather Hykes, increase in contract. She is an elementary teacher with our school of choice. Mariah Monkey, Math Teacher Increase. Jennifer Carlson, another increase as an elementary teacher. Kaylee Mucko, a Health Teacher IQ Increase. And Jessica Swedberg, another IQ Elementary Teacher Increase. Under certified staff overload contracts, we have Jennifer Tilke and Mindy Christensen, both in Language Arts. And they will, they have agreed to teach one overload, excuse me, one overload class for the first semester of our school year here. And then we have a leave of absence request from Andrew Millard. He's a Language Arts Teacher and requesting one year leave of absence for the 2021 school year. Little bit further down in new business, as Scott Kolbeck indicated, there will be a request for an additional one FTE kindergarten teacher, and then the hire of Kathy Smith. And so I would request approval of these personnel changes.
So do we have a motion to approve the general consent items? Missy, a second? From Steve? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? General consent items pass. Under old business, we have the annual evaluation of our superintendent Jeff Drake. And I'm just going to read a statement. The school board performed an annual performance appraisal of Superintendent Jeff Drake in July with a review of the overall ratings last school board meeting in a closed session on August 10th. The evaluation reviews the following areas of responsibility. There's aid of them, educational programs, school board relations, educational outcomes, public relations, finance, personnel, planning and reporting, and leadership qualities. The total overall rating of Superintendent Drake was above a four from a one through five point system, indicating a very good or above average performance appraisal from the entire board of Superintendent Drake. So that's just a synopsis of the evaluation. So moving on to new business, we have, our first item is the additional one FTE of kindergarten teaching position and a hire of Kathy Smith as a kindergarten teacher at McKinley School, effective 8/31/2020. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two is the school board policy 808 COVID-19 face coverings. This is a new policy that was in our email. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Would you mind giving a short recap for the public? Anyone that's familiar with contents, perhaps Elaine?
Short recap is a little challenging. But, well, the shortest recap is basically, it just follows the governor's executive orders. It really outlines those pieces, and it outlines the exemptions that one can have that's still underneath the executive orders. Missy, is what else?
Essentially, public schools, all people are required to wear a face covering.
Yes.
And there's a number that are, of styles that are acceptable. For students that may have special needs, whether they be health-related, et cetera, behavior-related, there are exemptions where you can get permission to be
behavior-related, there are exemptions where you can get permission to be mask exempt, don't have to wear one. And then there's also some provisions in the policy that allow you to wear a face shield instead of a face mask. And basically, we, we took the MSBA boilerplate policy and followed it with a couple of small exceptions. We made the face shield as an alternative for students that had negative response to the mask available K through 12th grade instead of K through eight. And then the other thing that we did is the, the policy indicated that when you're singing, you don't need to wear a mask. We know from anecdotal evidence that singing can be a, an activity where there's higher risk for transmission. And so we took the singing off the list as items where you're not required to wear a mask. And there can be some decision-making based on the instructors and the amount of space and whether you're singing inside or outside or in an auditorium versus a classroom on whether they think a mask would be necessary or not.
Very good. And of course, that policy will be on our website.
Yes.
For those who want to dig further.
And just for the general public, this is an emergency executive order from the governor is 20-81 and 20-82, just so people are curious, so what executive orders that was from the governor.
I should also add, just quickly for the public, mask wearing is required on the school buses as well.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all of us in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, there is no action on this one. This is the first reading of School Board Policy 522. This is Title IX, Sex Discrimination Policy, Grievance, and Procedures and Process. And so that we will prove that in our next board meeting. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this meeting, we will go into a work session to just talk about updates on the opening of school. Our next regular school board meeting is going to be Monday, September 14th at 5:15 PM, right here at the Allen Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Melanie. Do we have a second? Thanks. Any discussion? All of us in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.